Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County, October the 2nd Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd certainly I'd like to call Reverend David Frier for invocation. Reverend, thank you for being here this morning.
May we gather in prayer. Oh, Lord, you have created us in all our diversity, and you have placed us in community, in particular, in this beautiful oceanfront community called Dare County. We have been blessed in many ways. We are gathered here today to do the work of governing, the challenge of bringing together this wonderful diversity into a nurturing community, a place where all can live and grow. May we first give thanks for all our public servants who work diligently and competently to manage the infrastructure and services that allow us all to live in safety in this community. This morning, be with us those who are elected to serve in our community as its governors. Keep them mindful of the continuing task of unifying, caring, and nurturing each of our fellow citizens. Be with them in their deliberations. Give them ears to hear clearly, minds to think clearly, and a spirit of service dedicated to the common good. At the same time, be with all our fellow citizens. May we be responsive to the leadership of these our elected leaders. May we also share in our personal lives the same tasks and goals that we have entrusted to these our leaders. Finally, as we are in the midst of the democratic process of electing leaders, we pray that this election will maximize the participation of all of our citizens and allow the democratic process, that is so much a part of our community, to express the will of the people. May we be blessed, and may we all serve the common good. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that unfortunately Commissioner Tobin's not able to be with us this morning. I'd also like to have the board entertain a motion to move Item 7 up on the agenda to 3B.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to do so. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman and House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. County manager?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Item 1 on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. I just have two items this morning before we move into our agenda. You know, the Outer Banks is a first for many, many things, many, many things. And once again, this past Friday, the Outer Banks had another first, and that is the Mountain to Sea Trail. We held a ribbon-cutting ceremony Friday, this past Friday, at Jockeys Ridge at 10:00 a.m., and the vice chairman, Commissioner Ross, joined me there to unveil that monument. And I want to thank them for attending that unveiling of the new monument. It marks the end of the Mountains to Sea Trail, which spans some 1,175 miles from the great Smoky Mountains to Jockey Ridge State Park right here on the Outer Banks. Let me recognize a few groups that were responsible and have made this monument available and possible. The North Carolina State Parks Director Brian Strong, Friends of the Mountains to Sea Trail Director Brent Lorenz, Jockey Ridge State Park Leadership and Staff and Members, members of the Friends of the Mountains to Sea State Trail, members of the Friends of Jockey Ridge State Park. The Roanoke Island Women's Group behind every good project is a woman, no doubt, and then the Outer Banks Women's Club. The 18th and final segment of this Mountain to Sea Trail takes travelers on a journey through some of the most beautiful landscapes and diverse ecosystems the state of North Carolina has to offer. It includes miles of unspoiled beaches along Cape Hatteras National Seashore and Hatteras Island. Those who make the trek to the endpoint of the trail of Jockeys Ridge will have an opportunity to visit a variety of attractions and historical significance, not only to Dare County, but to the entire state of North Carolina and beyond. If you have, if you get a chance, go out to Jockeys Ridge State Park. It's an awesome monument. You'll be able to have photos and sit, sit up in the center of it with children and family members or whatever, and it's got a great background of the Jockey Ridge behind it. So if you get an opportunity, certainly go out there and, and take a look at it. It's a very nice monument. Second thing I have is our EMS directors here this morning, Ms. Jenny Collins. Jenny lost her mother recently, and we all attended that service, and Jenny, our hearts and prayers go out to you. We're so sorry for that, but what a lovely ceremony and mother you had, and our hearts and prayers are with you and your family. And then the third item, I take it back. I said I only had two, got a third item. I have asked the county manager, we added this item, workforce housing update, to our agenda, and I've moved it up behind public comment because I'm hoping everybody else will be able to stay here and listen to this update. Housing. We've been working on this for over three years. In spite of some of our citizens, we have a housing problem in Dare County. Folks, it's all over the country. It's all over the country. We have a housing issue in Dare County. Our board is diligently trying to find ways to find solutions. This next comment is not coming from the board, but me personally. I don't understand the opposition to trying to find housing for our EMS, our police, our fire, our teachers, our restaurant workers, our retail workers. Everybody says, yeah, we're in favor of it. There's a few out there that are opposed to it, but they're opposed to it because they don't want it in their backyard. They don't want it to be their next-door neighbor. Are you kidding me? You don't want the teacher that teaches your child to live next door to you? You don't want the fireman that will potentially put your house up, taking care of it in case you have a fire? You don't want the EMS worker that comes and takes care of you when you have a 911 situation? Folks, there are firemen, and there are police officers that have second jobs to make ends meet. For the life of me, I just don't get it. We will continue to do everything humanly possible to make workforce housing available in Dare County, and we all need to continue to work together to find solutions to make it happen. I have asked the county manager to take us from the very beginning and through where we are today with housing issues, and he will do that in just a few minutes. But enough is enough, folks. Let's work together to make it happen. Let's work together to make it happen. County manager? That completes my comments.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, that brings us to Item 2 on the agenda. We don't have any service pins this morning. We have some that couldn't be here, so we don't have any, so we'll move right into the Employee of the Month. We have two of those. We have one for the month of September, and we have one for the month of October. For the month of September, that will be presented by Jenny Collins.
She told you a fair.
I thought we were here about the Medicaid cost data.
I did get her here on false pretenses to tell you all about our Medicare reporting, but you all don't want to listen to that. So this is Angie Austin. She is our administrative technician, or specialist, specialist, I guess is the correct term, but that does not describe what she does. Angie is our billing coordinator. She has daily interactions with our billing company and the public, as well as all the workers within the department. She is the person who answers that phone when you have a billing question or if you need a report for anything, for your own insurance, for law enforcement getting reports, for law enforcement medical examiner, tissue bank donations, all those who have a need to have a copy of the patient care report form legally. She is the one that takes care of that. She deals with all the hospitals that we transport to on a daily basis. She also, if you need a scheduled transport for an ambulance, she is the one who sets that up, and she works with many of our care facilities in the, in the county to be able to arrange for that. She has lots of industry-specific certifications. She's a certified ambulance coder. She's a certified ambulance privacy officer. She also has a certified ambulance compliance officer, and at the end of October, she is going for her certified ambulance financial officer designation, which will complete this series that is specific for EMS billing. She provides HIPAA training for all of our personnel and anybody else who needs to have that information, and ensures that we remain compliant with the federal guidelines on that. In addition to all of that, she handles our requisitions for purchase orders, making sure, helping staff track their packing slips and requisitions for payments, and setting up vendors as county vendors in the system. So anything that has anything to do with the finance side of operations runs through Angie's desk and everything. But her nomination really was to recognize all those efforts, but she does all of this with a smile, and she is great motivation for anybody, and it is the grumpiest person who may be calling, and it may be full of emotion, and she can put them at ease, and even the saltiest soul will leave with a smile on their face after talking with Angie. And that's a specific talent to be able to have, and Angie certainly does that. And for that, I am pleased to present for the month of September, because she was on leave last month, and we occasionally have to let her off and couldn't make the commissioner meeting, but she's here today. So Angie, thank you. Sorry that I told a little white lie to get you here, but we are certainly proud of you. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. [applause]
Next, we have our Employee of the Month for October, and Dorothy Hester will make that presentation.
Welcome this morning, Dorothy.
Good morning. Stephanie, come on up.
Whoa.
You won't need your camera for this. You're going to take a selfie.
We have our other department members coming in. We fooled her this morning. We told her Caitlin wasn't feeling well, so she needed to take pictures, so. I think most of you all know Stephanie Banfield. She's our PR coordinator. She's been with us for just about three years. She came on board in September of 2020. We were dealing with COVID, of course. As I recall, about that time, we were busy with coordinating, or the Health and Human Services was doing the clinics over at Rec Park, because I think we worked on a video shortly after she started. But the PR coordinator was a newly created position. You know, we had been a two-person department, and the communications has just expanded so much, and I'm appreciative that you all added that position, and I'm thankful that Stephanie became that person for, for the county. She jumped in and never missed a beat. She has a background in journalism and marketing, so she easily acclimated and learned all aspects of the position and just county government in general, because there's a lot to it, and we have to know. I say we know a little bit about a lot. We know a lot about a lot, but, but we have to know a little bit about just about everything that, that goes on. Her primary responsibilities are writing and editing, and just to give you an idea of how much writing we do, over the last year, we've issued 379 news releases to over our 25,000 subscribers. That's about one press release a day, and it's safe to say that Stephanie has had her hand on each of those. If she didn't actually write it, she put her keen eye on it to make sure that it's free of errors in spelling and grammar and punctuation and style, so, and using the AP style that, that we use. So she's, she really has an unparalleled, she just catches everything. I think I'm pretty good, but, but she catches even more than I do. When we think about the writing, it's not just the releases. We, we help with, she writes brochures, flyers, correspondence, talking points, resolutions, video scripts, public service announcements, web content, including frequently asked questions. That's sort of the new, the new approach to getting information out, is helping answer the questions that people have. And in addition, crisis communications and newsletters. She was nominated for Employee of the Month by a Parks and Recreation employee who interacts with her each month as they coordinate their newsletter, and this is what that employee said. "Stephanie is always helpful answering any questions I have concerning our monthly newsletter process. She has great knowledge of the rules of the English language and proper grammar. I recently asked her about what her background was, and she told me she graduated with a journalism degree 20 years ago, and I told her I couldn't believe, believe that because she looks fresh out of college. She's happy to clarify any questions I have with great pleasure, and she edits beautifully and represents the county and her department in a wonderful light." So that's very well put. She earned her Bachelor of Arts in Journalism and Mass Communications from the University of Iowa, and has worked in a higher education marketing firm, a global editorial provider, a news, a daily newspaper, an online Outer Banks blog, an Outer Banks vacation rental company, and two magazine publishing companies headquartered in Raleigh. I remember one of the publications, I remember looking at her application when she started, and she was writing about cigars. Some of her, you know, there's, there's journals for, for everything, but I remember, I remember that clearly. So you may wonder, how did someone from Iowa end up on the Outer Banks? Well, her family started vacationing in Dare County when she was eight years old, and they stayed in all areas from Hatteras up through Duck, and she fell in love with the people and the places here. That's the way she tells it. And after 20 years of counting down how long she had before her next vacation, she relocated to Raleigh, and I think it was 2013, and really, she went to Raleigh just to get closer to the Outer Banks. And she finally moved here permanently in 2015. She describes herself as a creative writer, an ocean wildlife advocate, a photographer, and an avid reader. She is a true animal lover. She has two dogs that are like her kids. Shiba Anews, if y'all know what they are. And she also has two cats that were previous pets of the week in 2020. In 2022, she saw some of those videos and went over on her lunch break to adopt, and we've told her she's not allowed to head over there on her lunch break anymore. She's got four now. That's enough to take care of. But Stephanie's writing, editing, design, marketing, and communication skills, along with her passion for the people and places of Dare County, make her an excellent PR coordinator. So Stephanie, thank you for all you do for the PR department and for all of our departments and for the community. Thank you.
Before we go to public comment, those of you that received an award this morning, please go right out here with Caitlin to get a picture made, and we'll wait just a Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. When I do, please, we'll come back in just a second. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you're here to speak about the NC DOT Combined Program Grant, the C2 Zoning Text Amendment, or the AVON Zoning MAP Amendment, please wait until we get to those items on the agenda to give your public comment then. If you hear about any other matter, now is the time to do that. On my list, the first person I have signed up is Amy Phillips.
Good morning.
Welcome this morning, Ms. Phillips.
Yes, I live in Manio, and I will say a word that comes to mind for me this morning is enough. Enough overbuilding in Manio, enough traffic in Manio that is at gridlock many times throughout the day, enough of not being able to enjoy what we have in Manio because of the overcrowding. It is disingenuous to think that no one knew that this was happening with the state until recently. I knew the night that we turned it down in Manio, the 48 units, that it was not over, and I'm very disappointed. Yes, I believe in housing for teachers and firemen and policemen and others, but what I don't understand is why we've allowed so much expensive housing to be built first in Outer Banks before we build affordable housing. Manio has affordable housing. It was created by former Mayor Daniels. It is my opinion that we haven't done enough for the people of Dare County while we're doing so much to attract people from other areas. I feel like the people that live here and work here for years have been set aside. Some of them have had to move away because people sold their homes during COVID for inflated prices. People turned their rental houses into Airbnb to make more money, which I understand, people always want more money. But I also see that, you know, build and converting homes into Airbnbs. I mean, there's a whole host of reasons why we don't have enough affordable housing in Dare County. So it's not NIMBY. That is far from my mind. I don't mind other people living in our community. I welcome the workers having affordable housing in Dare County. So far, everything that I've seen built recently or approved has been unaffordable for people that are making less than $10 an hour as a waitress. I'm so angry I could cry. I'm disappointed. I realize that housing shortage is all over America. I also realize that other communities have made the same mistakes that we have made. And I'm, just in closing, I'm extremely disappointed. Thank you.
Next is Sybil Ross.
Welcome this morning, Ms. Ross.
Thank you. My name is Sybil Daniels-Ross. And if God's a-wild and creek don't rise, I'll be 77 next month. I live in Manio. I was born in Manio, and I had hoped to die in Manio. And as you can see, I'm part of Dare County's working poor. I'm lucky, I've got a full-time job. I do, however, work with people who have one, two, and three jobs. Even though I am the store accountant at Harris Teeter in Kelso Hills, I have a full-time job, and I have benefits, but my income is less than $40,000. I would not qualify for your affordable housing. But I came here in regards to a bit of history. You all are not to blame for the situation we are in, and I want the people of Dare County to understand that. You didn't create it. Back in 1976, Coastal Area Management Act came about, and they gave prior boards money to bring the people into the planning process. And part of that planning process should have been affordable housing. Well, you got into the 70s, and the boards then, they decided we needed a seafood park. Well, you know, the seafood park didn't work. You want to know why the seafood park didn't work? Because the wages that they paid for the people to work in the seafood park, they could not afford to live here. They didn't provide housing for them. So the seafood businesses moved to, you know, Plymouth and Columbia and what have you, but not in our seafood park. So we have a long, long history of this in Dare County. And when I read the papers and hear the people talking, what I am hearing is, it's not about NIMBYs, not in my backyards. It's about the way you're going about it. It's Dare County, owned and operated by the Outer Banks Home Builders Association, not the people who live here. And you think about these cottages on the beach, every one of those property owners have a right to have an input into the planning process in this county. They are property owners. Back when the Friends of Roanoke Island was still working, we got a grant, $20,000 from Ziegfeld Reynolds Foundation, and the land use planning process was coming about, and so we told the county that we were going to hire one of the college planning classes to develop a survey and send it out to every property owner in the county, not just run an ad in the Coastland Times. And so the county decided, well, maybe they better do it instead. And they did this survey, and they sent it out to every property owner in the county, and the results were astonishing. They were just about like I thought they were going to be. And it caused the board then to, to think. Now, the town of Manio, the town of Manio, they went further. About 40 years ago, they got the School of Design involved, and they came down here, and they went door-to-door to the people, and they had community meetings, and they developed a plan, and they wrote it into the land use plan, and they wrote it into the zoning, and they set about achieving their plan, developed by the community. And they achieved in 20 years over 90% of that plan, the waterfront redevelopment and a whole a whole bunch of things. So then they got the planning department to come back in, the School of Design, 20 years later, and they did it again. And town of Manio is working on that plan. Well...
Ross, you have about a minute left.
They did it with the people. You all have not done that. You have not gone to the people of this county. They can come up with solutions. It's not a NIMBY project, it's how you're going about it. You want to, more influence, stuff going into Shalabag Bay? Well, when Daddy built that plant, when it was renewed, when he was mayor, enlarged, they told him that you can't put any more ethylene out there. Once you have reached 80% of that plant, just know that you're not going to put any more ethylene. So where are you going to go with it? You're going to go out here and croton sound? You know what happens when you do that? Every shellfish bed, five miles in all directions, gets shut down. I thought you all really supported the fishing industry. Where do you think you're going to put all this poop and get all this water from? Well, there's some things you can do. It's time Dare County had a housing authority and not have to depend on whether the developers make money off of a project or not. You can do it, it can be done, but you need to change your ways. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Blackstone.
Thank you. Shelley Blackstone, Nodahoman, Nagseth. I have to say, I agree with everything that the prior speaker said. So mine, mine is going to be short and sweet. First of all, I and others believe that Dare County should follow a process to correct the erroneous language in the state budget. This, that dishonors the towns' planning and zoning rights. Can you imagine if you were a town planner and that was your job? I thought we lived in a democracy. I, I, I'm just astounded by that. And if Dare County didn't put that language in, then they need to make the correction and stand behind it. I totally agree, the problem overall is poor planning. Putting in Target, where Kmart abandoned property was, could have put some housing there. Too much development, too much tourism and high-end development, no balance. The community's resistance to the high-density housing projects is due to the lack of transparency and due to excluding them from the plan, from planning for the solution. The chairman mentioned, we've been working on this for three years. Question is, who is "we"? Who is "we"? The community has been excluded from the planning. There is no task force, there is no comprehensive plan, and, and the community has, has not been involved. The community needs to come together to devise a plan, a plan that addresses affordable housing for retail, restaurant, EMS, police, fire, nurses, and teachers, and also considers our stressed infrastructure. I loved your comment about the poop and the fishing. I mean, come on, let's be realistic. This, this, this whole area is, is floating on septic tanks. Our environment needs to be considered. And we need to think about transportation for those who aren't actually in the county, public transportation. Also consider taxes, and for people to take, maybe take some of their vacation rentals off, off a vacation rental. Dare needs to listen to and include the community. The community has done great things in the past, like saving Jockeys Ridge and establishing Jockeys Ridge State Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Say that again, Bobby.
Amy Stone.
Welcome, Ms. Stone.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I'm here mostly to speak about how in the world did this 28.4 get into the state budget? And absolutely, nobody knows where it came from. It took me a week to kind of figure out how this happened. I have spoken to Norm Sanderson personally, our senator. I have spoken to Ed Goodwin, our, actually, he's not my representative because I'm in, in Wanches. I have spoken to the legislative aides of Kidwell, the Speaker of the House, Cook, and the President Pro Tem Berger. So this is what I have managed to put together. It's not a mystery. What happened is this is leftover language from when Senator Cook got the original 25, $35 million for the Affordable Housing Project. His legislative aide is Jordan Hennessy. Jordan Hennessy is a principal in affordable, in coastal affordable housing, as well as the Dredge LLC. How convenient. Kidwell's office told me that it came out of the Senate, they had nothing to do with it. Now, either she was misinformed or directly lied to me, but that was not true. I have seen some similar things that some of you have seen that has Kidwell's name on it. The question is, who put Kidwell up to it? When I tried to contact Kidwell's office again, he was conveniently out of town and on vacation, unavailable for comment. It's abominable. The way this happened is Norm Sanderson called it a high priority list. But basically, what happened is this language was slipped into what you call the consensus report. And for those that are not aware of that, what that is, you've got language that goes back and forth between the House and the Senate, and they're trying to figure out how they're going to word, what they agree on. And it's finally, everything's agreed on, and everybody's kicking back going, boy, we just about are over the finish line. And this little piece of legislation got slipped in. Nobody read the 650-page report. Thank you, Nancy Pelosi, for starting that precedent. I thought this was a Republican Senate and House in North Carolina, but apparently, they, they, they don't really like transparency. And this board does not either. I surmise that Jordan Hennessy was the individual who put Kidwell up to submitting this in, this, this little attachment. And I have, find that very problematic. He is a principal in the corporation, and he will personally benefit financially from that piece of legislation. It is at best unethical, at worst, probably possibly illegal, and maybe corrupt. That's what needs to be looked into. So our problem is with no transparency, with how this is trying to be shoved down our throats. And the precedent that this legislation has a potential to lead to is that, why in the world do you have personal, why do you have local zoning if the state can come in and supersede it? So gentlemen, there are lots of questions that need to be answered. And most of you here are on first-name basis with people in the state that have those answers. And I think it would be welcome news to us to hear the absolute truth. If you think for one minute that this is going to open up the door for negotiations where you can get people to sit down in a room from all the municipalities and agree on something, I think you're sorely misled. Thank you.
Next is Basil Belshitz. Say that again, Bobby. I'll get him to pronounce, I can't read your handwriting.
It's Basil Belshitz. Good morning, y'all.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My wife and I are full-time residents in Nagseth. I'd like to also speak about the legislation in the state budget that allows any affordable housing development funded by Dare County to be exempt from municipal planning and zoning regulations. This means there'd be no control of height, size, density, setbacks, or other existing limitations on such projects. This legislation is targeted only to Dare County and is an affront to all incorporated towns in Dare. The towns have zoning and construction regulations to help ensure appropriate land use and development, and to help protect the environment, and to help to maintain quality of life for its residents. I read in several publications that the Dare County Board of Commissioners and County Manager did not request this legislation and did not know about it. I also read that Woa to Cooper had no knowledge of it, and that the legislation does not apply to them, but only to Coastal Affordable Housing Company. With that being the case, Dare should request the provision to be removed from the budget during the technical corrections bill period, since they didn't request or plan to use the provision prior to its being included in the budget. If that won't work, I request Dare to do the right thing and refrain from using this legislation, and to make a proclamation to that effect since they didn't ask for or know about this legislation. That way Dare County and the towns can work together to solve the workforce housing issues. Chairman Woodard, I heard your comments at the beginning, and I appreciate that. And as for us working together, I volunteer my time to help in any way y'all wish, task force, citizens committee, whatever, to help solve this. Thanks for letting me speak today.
Thank you. David Bragg. Yep. Bobby. David Bragg. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Bragg.
Good morning. David Bragg, Nagseth. You gentlemen probably need to revisit this. It's the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. I'll take a little excerpt. Government are instituted among men, deriving their powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and institute a new government. We're at about that point. I had prepared speaking points, but since I heard Mr. Woodard again address the same thing he talks about every time, oh, we need this, we need that, we need that. I worked in South Florida. I worked three jobs. You know why? Because I wanted to live in South Florida. I love South Florida. Warm, nice. I went to New Orleans then. I drove 45 minutes each way to work on a good day because I wanted to be in New Orleans. People want to be here, then they have to take personal responsibility to do it. You keep, keep talking about, oh, we've got, not in my backyard. Do a little research about my backyard. It started with the Love Canal. And you're from Portsmouth. Let's talk about the affordable housing that was built there. My father-in-law made a great living at the Ace Hardware in Portsmouth because the place was beat up soon thereafter it was built. It has now been plowed under. There's your affordable housing. Now, let me go to some of the points I wanted to speak of. Mr. House, I sent you an email, never got a response. Something about you saying that you're tired because I am tired about being stopped at every roadblock or having roadblocks. Well, guess what? We, the people, elected you. We, the people, are stopping. What, what'd you say?
I've never received an email.
I got it right here in front of me. I sent it to you. You never responded.
I, I've never received.
Well, then you ought to look at your email once in a while.
I do every day.
So what the case is, you talk about "I." There is no "I" in government. You work for me and the rest of the people in this room. So when it's "I am tired," the people in this room stopped you, and stopping all of you. Thirdly, we had some other things discussed today about who put that legislation in. Well, guess what? As soon as we have that name, I'm going to put a FOIA request in for all of you, for any emails, conversations, telephone calls that you had with that representative. Because all of, nobody knows anything. It's amazing how a government is run by no one knowing anything. We don't know where it came from, we weren't part of it, and so on and so forth. That's not how the United States has been run, but it is now, from the top, from the federal government, Joe Biden on down. And it's amazing, this state is going to do what Barack Obama could. Barack Obama wanted to put affordable housing in all neighborhoods. Congress and the Senate said, no, that's not going to fly. But it appears you boys and the boys up in Raleigh have made that happen. So you've taken the most liberal agenda item of Barack Obama, and it's, you're going to make it real in North Carolina. Reminds me of Oliver Anthony talking about rich men north of Richmond. Well, now we're going to have rich men west of the Outer Banks deciding what we do here in the Outer Banks. And I'm getting tired of it. We've got Rob Ross and Woodard that come to a Nagseth meeting to try to stiff-arm our people into building there. And then Woodard, they come when there's four people there. And they said, oh, it was well-publicized where it's going to be. No, it wasn't.
About a minute left.
The most, the most recent article also states, let's see, it was, there's plans for Woodard Cooper to build 57 units at an unspecified site. Unspecified, well, how do you expect people to show up at a meeting if you don't tell them where it's going to be? The first meeting you boys showed up to, four people showed up. I didn't see you there when there were 60 people. You two didn't want to hear the 60 people say, no, it's not going to be built there. You got a 3.7 piece of, million-dollar piece of property that you're going to build on between the highways. The Board of Education owns land in Manio that they're illegal renting with trailers on them. Why don't you do some investigation on that? And let's, let's find out why they're renting them. That was a site that was going to be used, and now it can't be used. Why is that? It's illegal to rent.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Bragg. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Bragg. Yep. Next is Ruth Stetson. Bobby, you, you say that when... Ruth Stetson. Ruth Stetson, welcome.
Hello, everybody. I am Ruth Stetson, a Town of Manio Commissioner. And it's hard to follow all those fiery people, but I want to start by just saying, I seek counsel on everything. I mean, I think you guys are professing believers, and the Bible says that we need to seek counsel. So I sought pastoral counsel on this, and I was told Proverbs 25:2, which is essentially that leaders need to bring truth to light for the people. We can't hold anything back from them. We need to make sure they know things. So the, I, I also wanted to know about the legislation and where it came from. And I've been told that allegedly, the North Carolina Home Builders Association and the Outer Banks Realtors Association hired a lobbyist as far back as May, and that that lobbyist is, has part in this. So there are pieces that are coming to light. We have an area where a lot of people talk. That's good or bad. But as far as the housing goes, I've talked to your county manager numerous times, and I've talked to some of you guys. And I think that what we're missing is a voice at the table. There is a voice for housing. There are a lot of business owners that want housing. Food Lion wants housing, Target wants housing. They want J-Housing, they want all kinds of housing. But there's also citizens that don't want housing, and we shouldn't insult them when they don't want it. We shouldn't say, that's NIMBY. Why can't they want what they want in their backyard? This is America. You know, I think that our, our citizens deserve to have the freedom of an opinion. And so I would, I would ask you, please, to not insult them. Because we are all believers, and we are, or many of us are believers, and slander is a sin. So we need to be careful with that. I would like to say that the housing has been such a strange issue because I was told that, in, in your, in your studies, it says that the AMI is $72,000. Well, the units are going to be market rate, or they're going to be rated at no more than 80% of that, which is $56,000 a year. Well, I started talking to people that make these local salaries, these teachers, these firefighters, these police. I thought, well, I'll just go to them directly. Most of them don't qualify. I couldn't even find one that qualified. So I don't know who it is that's going in these units. I also think when we negotiated Bowser Town, you said that we could do 10 teacher units. But you had to, those had to be put in a whole separate way. So that tells me if we had to do something special to get 10 teacher units, then how are the teachers going in these units? I can't put these pieces together. Also, we have 800 housing units in the town of Manio, and, and Mr. Woodard, you've said twice in an article that we need 2,500. So I did a Freedom of Information Act, and I requested the RFQ from Coastal Affordable Housing and the contract that you signed. And I found something really interesting. While there are 840-bedroom units mentioned in here, there's also a proposed... So I just wonder why we aren't letting the economy breathe. I wonder why we aren't... If you are Republicans, you're free-market capitalists, and subsidizing housing is kind of against that. And so I know I'm new to this, but I spent a lot of time studying, and I can't really understand this puzzle. None of this makes any sense to me. How you didn't know? Have you been shunned by those in Raleigh? Because we're the fourth-largest economy in North Carolina. Our budget's $250 million. You were up 5% last year without raising taxes. We're doing great over here. The state has to love us. I'm sure they're patting you guys on the back. I mean, you're a finance man, Mr. Ross, and I'm confused at how we say we don't have money for medical infrastructure. We spent $300 in the Town of Manio, and we got a clinic open in a year with Malcolm Fairing's help. I say, "Hire him." I thank you guys for your service, and I respect you for taking the oath of office and trying to serve us. I know this is a difficult job, but I'm praying for you daily, and I have for two solid years, that you will please listen to the voice of your citizens and slow down. Because there is a voice that is not being publicized here that are all of us that want you to just be mindful of the resource that God has given us. And I will remind you that in Revelation, God says, "I will destroy those that destroy the earth." Thank you very much.
Michael Bean.
Welcome this morning, Micah.
Good morning. Oh, man, I lost my note. Okay. Hi. I am here as a citizen. I'm a native of Dare County. I was born and raised. I love Dare County. I know y'all love Dare County because you're serving for Dare County. And I love our people, our communities, our heart, our spirit. But I'm hugely concerned about how we're approaching affordable housing. And so I wanted... I'm a business owner. I believe in free-market capitalism. But I also have concerns about infrastructure, medical services, and emergency services. In terms of... I wish we maybe could consider some creative approaches as well. We have lots of Airbnbs. Could we do a tax incentive or a tax something to encourage people not to have an Airbnb, but to rent their rentals long-term? Could we... I just wonder if there's some creative options that we could consider that would be incentives that would encourage people who own land and resources to maybe not do vacation rentals, but some long-term rentals. My issue with the Bowser Town is I just think it's low-hanging fruit. And let me tell you why. You're using their septic. I live in Manio, and I work in Wentzies. Multiple times a week, I'm unable to get through Manio, and I have to drive through Mans Harbor. Again, I can do it, but I can't imagine adding extra infrastructure. I have a friend, she lives behind the Front Porch Cafe. Her water's brown, and it ruins their wash sometimes, and the Town of Manio has to come out. But we already have a water problem. And my water has so much chlorine in it that it's above levels, and we have to have filters on the house. So I just say, in terms of water, and we're having some challenges. We could talk about the people who've died in the sound. We could talk about how we have to close different areas where people are unable to swim because of the bacteria in the water. I just feel like the earth's kind of groaning, and maybe we could just say, "Hey, how could we work this?" I also think we have land in East Lake, and we would have... It would be much harder to move to East Lake, getting infrastructure, emergency services, and septic in East Lake. But you have more room. It seems like just that we're kind of jumping on the bandhandle of like, "Let's just add some more to Manio, but we can't get through Manio." My parents do not have... They have to go out of this county for an eye doctor appointment. Their GP is six months out. My GP is four months out. I just sometimes... Which, these are things like, I know y'all have a lot on you, but I just think, "And then we're going to add more people." And I wonder how we're going to guarantee that the teachers are going to live there? How are we going to guarantee the fire peo... I mean, I love firefighters. I was a teacher. I taught for North Carolina for six years. And I did work three jobs in Greensboro. But I want to say, maybe we could increase our pay for those. Could we take some of this funding, increase pay? So I just... I do have concerns. So as a citizen, as a business owner, I see... We appreciate that you're working on this, and thank you, but I do have some concerns. And I just want you to know those concerns. And I took off work this morning to come here and say, "Hey, for the people who could not take off work, we're very concerned." And those are my main concerns. But I feel that we have some options. And we have so much money that goes to the Tourist Bureau. Can any of that money go to East Lake to build housing there? I mean, I just feel like there might be some creative options that we could work with people and have some different things. I did run into somebody in the post office who's very involved in this project, and I shared my concern because, you know, I voted for you all, and I'm a Republican too. And I just said, "Hey, this does not look good for us," you know? And the person said that you all have the power to say no, and that you can reject any aspect of this. And so I just hope that y'all use your wisdom, and we can be creative and say no to things that would not be good what makes our community spirit in Dare. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah.
That's all that I have signed up. Yes, ma'am.
I didn't realize I was supposed to sign.
That's fine. Come up and state your name and where you're from.
Thank you.
I'm Debbie Carrera, and I'm from Nags Head. It's difficult to discuss our response to the Dare County Affordable Housing section of the North Carolina budget. The facts seem to be limited in how we reach this point well-concealed. What is clear is that section... that this section of House Bill 259 limits the ability of members of the Town of Dare County to govern. After several calls to the North Carolina General Assembly, seven representative offices, three senators, and two General Assembly employees, a complete consensus revealed that this directive came most definitely and directly from within Dare County. Process of elimination leads us here. I believe the members of this board care deeply about Dare County and its residents. I believe the members of this board thought the drastic measure to strip the towns of their managing control was needed after multiple failed attempts to develop affordable housing. But we are a democracy, and the majority of the members of Dare County do not agree with you. You went well beyond your scope. Your act of defiance showed a lack of trust in your constituents and a lack of trust in your colleagues and town leaders. Going to the North Carolina legislators, Senator Anderson, Representative Goodwin, and Representative Kidwell, who don't seem to remember much of the events leading up to the vote, or the budget, or the vote itself, was short-sighted. Dare County does not need legislation from Raleigh to create housing for its residents. People want transparency in their elected officials. We have seen this across the country. They don't want politicians who make secret deals behind closed doors, even when rooted in the best of intentions. I am proposing we move forward in a different direction, a more collaborative effort between county and townships. I suggest a drill down to understand why, despite your best efforts, these prior affordable housing efforts have failed. I don't think it's one layer. I challenge you to listen to the people who elected you and create a task force amongst the Dare County towns with each town representative... represented, giving each of the towns the opportunity to appoint their own representatives. It is my suggestion that the future be a collaborative effort for affordable housing. Dare County needs affordable housing, and you can't win, not really win, without the support of the towns. And bulldozing doesn't count as winning. In May, at the short-term session of the General Assembly, I ask you retract, correct, remove the Dare County Affordable House section that stripped Dare County municipalities of their ability to govern, and begin to build our community back. Second, create the Dare County Affordable Housing Task Force. Trust that the Dare County Board of Commissioners, you can create a task force among these towns to effectively create housing for essential workers. We all want better for our community. I believe we can achieve this working together with your leadership. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak at public comment? Yes, sir.
Welcome this morning, Mr. Ferry.
Good morning, Board. I want to start off with a different tone, and that tone is a thank you. Emotions are high. This is a difficult issue that didn't start with your board. This issue has been around for decades, as I've been in it for over 30 years advocating for housing. I want to thank the General Assembly, especially our representatives, for the $35 million. That's a lot of money. I want to thank you for the $12 million that you're all willing to put up to address this issue. I'm not caring about what has happened, who did what. What I'm caring about primarily is the person that's not in the room, working that two or three jobs, that needs a place to live. That's who I'm most concerned about. I believe most of us are concerned about our fellow Dare County residents that do not have a place to rent or cannot afford to live here. This brings me back to a real contentious time that I was right in the middle of, our burden with schools. I don't know, Danny, you can remember that? Everybody was mad. Emotions were high. But what we did, after the bond was defeated, we came together as a community and created some of the best schools in our state. I think we can do that now. There's been a lot of conversation on affordable in rent, but I think also we need to be looking at affordable home ownership. One of the reasons I believe we have an issue is our prior community leaders who conserved 80-some percent of our landmass in public hands. Bobby, it could be higher than that. So there's very little available land for us to build on. Our success is part of our problem. Walter Davis pointed this out years ago when he proposed a land transfer tax concerning the people that live here and the burden of the absentee property owners would bring by wanting to live here and have a vacation home. My father one time got madder than snot at me. I was talking about issues and problems, and he banged his hand. He was a pharmacist on the typewriter. He typed two fingers, said, "I don't want to hear your problems. I want to hear your solutions." So that's what I want to talk about today. And several people have talked about unity, coming together as a community to solve the problem. I believe most people want that. How to do that? I've talked about Buffalo City. There was only one city in Dare County ever, and it was Buffalo City. Hundreds some years ago, it had over 3,000 people that lived there. It was on the mainland. I have advocated, and I'm still advocating, and that might not be the solution. But a parcel of land that the county owns that's cleared, has roads and ditches. I'm sure there are issues and concerns that would be applied to that piece of property. But I am suggesting that we look westward to a parcel of land, and there could be others, that could be developed, not in just housing, but where is our next ball field going to go? Where are our next schools going to go? And where is the next pickleball court going to go? So I want to thank each one of y'all for addressing this issue. This issue is more important to do correctly than quickly, and is more... And it is most important that this issue does not fail, because it will only hurt the people that we're trying to help. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak at public comment? Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chris Carey from Wentzies. All right. So I'm here to comment a bit about Section 24.8A and B. And a lot has already been said about this, about there was no... No one knows where it came from, and there was, you know, no knowledge of it and all that other stuff. My understanding is that the municipalities have raised some alarms about this, and I've yet to hear anything from the county along those same lines. All I've heard is denials. We don't know. So my question is, and I've only been around here for a bit, but like, who is this coastal affordable housing that has this $35 million? Everyone I spoke to in the community about this, that they didn't really know. And one guy that I work with, he said that, "Well, I think that was a company that tried to build on top of the Outer Banks Disc Golf Course." I'm like, "Oh, the bomb track, right? Yeah." And that didn't work out, right? Because people didn't want it. So that's who I thought coastal affordable housing was, was like people who destroyed like golf courses, right, for frisbees? But no, like, I did a little further research, and I'm sure we all know about this, but I looked on the NC Secretary of State LLC. That was someone named Tanya Twigg as a representative of a law firm in Charlotte, North Carolina. And they're... They specialize in injuries and criminal law, wrongful death, and state administration. So that's who has filed this LLC that has the $35 million. All right, so it's a consortium, my best understanding, right? And who are they? What's the transparency? They don't even have a website. If I had a question for them, who's their public information officer? Woda Cooper has a website. They made comments in the paper. They're reachable. Who's coastal affordable housing? Well, I looked at that. Okay, SFNLA Architects, and I'm sure y'all know this, but I'm just trying to say this for everyone's edification, company in Raleigh, and they seem to specialize in commercial and designing of higher education institutions. Meton General Contractors specialize in schools, commercial, and healthcare facilities. And in fact, I've seen them building some sort of school out on 64, I think, near Crestwell.
School out on 64?
Thank you for that. Timmons Group, as the engineers, they list affordable housing as a market, as being active in that market. So good for that. Doug Brimley, Brimley Beach Vacations, well, we all know what they do, so that sounds like they're pretty qualified. And then the last is Jordan Hennessy of Pamlico Management Group, who runs... who owns the dredge. And that dredge has done quite amazing work. I've heard a lot of people Wentzies happy about how that has opened up the Oregon inlet. So good move there. But Pamlico Management Group, don't know who that is. Or the recently filed Pamlico Management Group Capital Holdings LLC that was opened up back in June of this year. Is that part of the consortium, or is that his own deal? Is Jordan Hennessy here?
No.
No? All right. So there's... That's pretty opaque to me. You know, someone doesn't quite understand this. And before we start talking about think tanks and more work groups, please consider that, like, in my opinion now, you've already lost quite a bit of goodwill from the communities. The heavy-handed, opaque methods have scorched the earth and squandered the citizens' goodwill. Even if it was to say that the company, you know, the community input will count with this, I don't believe it. This working together, cooperation, collaboration, compromise, I didn't see any of that with the cluster home situation Wentzies. Nothing. Y'all passed that 5-0, and all you said was, "It's the law. We can't go against the law." Well, this 22 thing's the law too. So you guys going to stand up to that? You know, we didn't create this problem as local residents. You know, my impression is that it was identified by the Board of Commissioners... So, you guys going to stand up to that? You know, we didn't create this problem as local residents. You know, my impression is that it was, it was identified by the Board of Commissioners, and perhaps the Chamber of Commerce, and maybe the Board of Realtors, and the home builders helped contribute to the situation. You know, I'm not here to point fingers. But, you know, in summary, I'll just say that, it appears to me that you keep trying the same things expecting different results, and I encourage you to refrain from using this legislation. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak at public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no hands, is there any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
If that, Mr. Chairman, we close public comment, and we'd move to item.
Hold on, hold on a minute, County Manager. If you'll sit down a minute, you know, I want to take a minute to, and I want to thank everybody for their comments this morning. Please know, we take everything you say to heart, and it's very important to hear from you. I would like to try to clarify a few things. You know, it was, with reference to overbuilding, enough is enough, et cetera, I'd encourage those that made those comments, go to the towns and tell the towns that. We're only talking about unincorporated Dare here on this board. And we've tried to work with the towns on some potential sites in their community. And, and in all due respect, Mr. Bragg, perhaps maybe you may need to look into a little bit deeper about your facts. I meet with the mayors every single month for lunch. For six months, we were told by the mayor in Nagshead that this site was an agreeable site for their board. Six months, I was told that. That is, you've had your time. I'm having mine. That is why, I will ask you to step out of the room if you do not allow me to reply.
I'll step out, but on my way out, I'm going to hand this, so Mr. Hous can see the email that I sent him.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Do your homework, though. That's why Mr. Ross and I went to the meeting, because we were told that it was, it was an approved, it was going to be an approved site, and we went and we spoke in favor of it. That's why we showed up there. It was mentioned that overall poor planning, that perhaps it could have been an essential housing, affordable housing, where the target is in Kill Devil Hills. We had no, we have no jurisdiction over that. That's the town of Kill Devil Hills. You need to go to town of Kill Devil Hills and talk to them about what goes on in their town, and vice versa. There were some very, very positive comments with respect. Micah, I really appreciate what you had to say. You're exactly right. We need to work on that, on that. That's, that's some very good comments that you made to us, and we appreciate that. I know I personally appreciate that. We've talked about a task force, and hopefully that, that's something we can potentially do as a board with, with the county. Manio, that was our property in Bowser Town. Our property, unincorporated Dare. We went to the town of Manio. We went back and forth and back and forth with them. We listened to what they had to say. It was hundreds and some units to begin with, and we asked them what they thought maybe might work. We ended up with 46 units. Once again, the bottom line is, they didn't want us to tap into their system, and I understand that. Read my comments in the voice. Read my comments in the voice, Ruth Stetson. I didn't put you down. I said, thanks to their commissioners, they listened to their board. I did not criticize, not the first commissioner in Manio. And I understand where they come from. They listened to their constituents. As a matter of fact, you and I had a phone conversation at one time. "Oh, Mr. Woodard, I think we might be able to get something done here." Well, that, unfortunately, that didn't happen, did it? But the simple fact of the matter is, they listened to their constituents, and I didn't criticize them for that. We had the issue in One Cheese. This board agreed to make some changes back in 2018. We had no idea the density would be as what it became to be, and a plan was put in place, and we couldn't, we couldn't deny that. But we listened to the citizens of One Cheese, and we reversed it, and we took it out. And that, I don't ever see anything happening in cluster home or anything like that in One Cheese again. So we listened. So to continue to come up here and criticize us and say that we don't, we're not, we're not transparent is just totally inappropriate and wrong, and nobody works any harder than this board of sitting here today. We get phone calls after phone calls after phone calls, and I want you to hear the lady and the child on the phone crying that they don't have a place to stay. You listen, you hear those comments, and then see what you, see, see how you react. See how you react. We understand that we want to work with the towns. We're not going to do anything crazy. We had, we went to Manio, they asked for seven or eight different items, and we agreed to do every single one of them. We're not coming to any town and trying to shove anything down a town's throat with respects to their ordinances and, and issues concerning housing. This board would never do that, and so it's that simple. So I'm responding. So, with that being said, County Manager.
We don't need preach, Zach.
Well, I'm responding to public comment, ma'am. Yes, I am. Thank you for your time, County, County Manager.
Yes, sir. That brings us to item 3B, and you all had asked for a workforce housing update. So I'm going to go through a little bit of history, and then tell you where we are, and then tell you some ideas that we've discussed for kind of moving forward. Affordable housing has been on the table for a while, probably close to 30 years, Malcolm. We had a community development corporation, which was a public, was an entity that we created that had political people, it had people from the community on it. That group met for years, trying to further the need for housing and affordable housing here in Dare County. And quite frankly, over the period of its life, it accomplished very little. There was one, I think, building built over in, in Nagshead, a small, and there's several apartments over there. But other than that, very few accomplishments. That group acquired some land to try to do something on one time, and was unable to do it, and I believe lost the land. And ultimately, the group went defunct because it just wasn't accomplishing anything, and it wasn't able to do anything to move the needle with housing. The housing problem didn't go away. It only became worse, and has continued to get worse ever since. And so we came to a point where, you know, we were trying to do something with the Bowser Town site, and this was well before the current discussions. In fact, there was a site plan done to try to do something on that site, and it had roughly 45 to 47 housing units on it as well. The goal then was to try to find a developer to let the market do it, and we would put up the land, and then we'd be out of the way, and the market would come in. And we pushed that site, pushed those plans around to multiple developers over time, and really never got anybody who was willing to invest their money in, in doing that. And so for over 30 years, the market really isn't, hasn't been able to address affordable housing. That is not unique to Dare County. There's an article in the paper almost every day of some community in North Carolina that's having problems similar to us. You know, in Raleigh, they're building apartments coming out the roof, but they're all market rate apartments, and so they're, they're having the same issues we're having. You know, in other small towns, they're having the same issues we're having, and everybody's trying to address it. And the only way that anybody is using, the only ways to do that are some form of assistance from government, whether it's local government, state government, the federal government, something to do to allow those projects to be profitable to the developer while also keeping rents controlled, so that the people that you target, you can have them come in and build units. So with that backdrop having not gotten anywhere, we started once again to work on the Bowser Town project, and we prepared to put up our own money, and this was before the state money became available, and began working on that site, and began working on that site with the town of Manio, because we, we knew that we probably needed their sewer to make that project work. It was in the town, in the county, so we knew that the zoning would work, and so really the only issue we had was the, trying to find a way to deal with the sewage. We met with the town of Manio multiple times over the course of a year, a year and a half. They had a number of issues. I thought we had addressed all of those issues, pretty much every issue that came before us. We said, "Yes, we can do that." End of the day, they still didn't feel comfortable allowing us to connect to their sewer, and so that project went away. Along the same time, the legislature addressed the need for affordable housing. If you look at the original enabling legislation where that $35 million came from, they said there's an affordable housing problem in, in Dare County, a workforce housing problem. I think one of the speakers, you know, said something to, to that effect, that there was, there's a problem here, and that we're the, one of the big, the fourth largest, I think she said, economy in North Carolina. And so that being true, the legislature identified their fourth largest economy as having a housing problem, and, and made a substantial contribution to try to solve that problem, and gave us a grant of $35 million. That $35 million had strings attached. It was done, and we were required to spend it a certain way. That money is not in the developer's account. It's in our trust account. We have that money in our bank now. We control that money. No checks get written until we approve those checks. And so we have that money, have had it for several years, and have not been able to accomplish anything with affordable housing with that. There's been some discussion about the Nagshead project. There was a site in Nagshead that the gentleman spoke about, that Nagshead ultimately said no. But that site was chosen for a reason. It was chosen because it was zoned for multifamily housing, and it was zoned for a density of the number of units that were desired to be put in there. And it was expensive land, and we were willing, after some discussion, to spend the extra money because it was zoned the way the town wanted it zoned. It was the way the town had set it up to do. And so we went there, encouraged our developer to go there, worked with them to come up with a site plan that met the zoning ordinances, and they did that. They had a plan that would have met those ordinances exactly as they were written, without any changes, without requesting the town to do anything. However, when the town became aware that someone was going to come in and do something in their town pursuant to their ordinances, the way they designed their ordinances, they changed the ordinances and said, "Oh, no, you can't do that." And so, once again, we weren't able to do something there.
So the town afterwards changed the ordinances?
Correct.
That we were complying with when we first approached the town?
That is correct.
So, you know, I don't know what stage the developer is. I don't know where the developer was in their relationship with the town, but I do know that the plan that we talked about with them was going to meet their ordinances, and when the town became aware of that, they said no, and changed the ordinance, went into a moratorium, and then changed the ordinance. So, so we, we didn't have the ability to do that then. That brings us to where we are today, and, you know, there's been a lot of consternation about that statute that came out. I can tell you, and I'll say it unequivocally, we did not request that. Our lobbyist is here today. He, he didn't hear for this, but he didn't lobby for it. We didn't ask anybody to lobby for it. We didn't get involved in that. We didn't have anything to do with having that. And we, going forward, you know, we first, I first saw the statute that we're talking about when it came from the newspaper reported the day after it came out in the legislature. So we weren't, hadn't seen that up until that point. Following day, or the following two days, you heard the chairman say that he meets with the, the mayors monthly. Well, the managers meet, we meet for lunch monthly as well. At that monthly meeting, I told them exactly what I'm telling you. I also told them that the county, in my view, had no intention of going into any town and bulldozing them and building something, you know, a 50-story high-rise in a town, you know, that kind of thing. So, so we aren't intending to do any of that stuff. We, we, I have tried hard to work with the towns. We've had discussions with the towns. Those, those discussions, as between us and the towns, have all been amicable. They haven't worked out, but that's fine. That's how it works, and we'll figure out how to make something work, you know, as we go forward. But that's sort of the process that gets us where we are today. There was some discussion about you couldn't afford rentals, you couldn't afford this. We've got two pots of money here. We've got $12 million that Dare County put up of their money. That money is restricted to the 80% of AMI that someone spoke of. So if AMI, I think she said, was $72,000, then that's for people who have incomes of 80% of $72,000. The $35 million that we got from the state doesn't have that restriction on it. That project would be a roughly $100 million project, of which 35 million came from the state. The 35 million, that's roughly 35%. So 35% of those units would be restricted by the 80% AMI, but the balance of those units would be at whatever rent we negotiate with the developer, and they would be less than market. So we could go to 100, 120% of AMI in those units, have units available for people that make $80,000, $90,000, those kind of price ranges, but be less than the market rate for units that are now on the market, and we can solve a whole variety of our housing problems, because we'll have a range from 80% AMI all the way up to as much as 120% AMI. That's the plan. The plan is to have housing units that fit multiple ranges, and how they're restricted depends on which pot of money they're paid for. So that's been our plan from the start. That's been the plan going forward, and so that's where we are, and unless something changes, which I don't think it will, that's what we're going to do moving forward. There's been some talk, especially in Manio and Nagshead, because those are the two places that we've talked to, about steamrolling them, understand that this legislation doesn't apply to either one of them. The legislation only applies to the $35 million. The $35 million was not being used to build anything in Nagshead or in Manio. That came out of the $12 million pot that was our money. The statute that was adopted doesn't affect that $12 million. So unless we change plans, and unless Coastal Affordable Housing, who was our private partner, and we're, we're required to use a private partner by the statute, unless that $35 million is used, then the statute that just came out does not apply. And so we haven't done anything in Manio with Coastal Affordable Housing or using that $35 million. And the plan that we had in Nagshead, it's been publicized a bunch, was being done by Woda Cooper, which is not using that $35 million either. And so, again, we're not trying to steamroll anybody. We're not trying to, you know, jam anything down anybody's throat. You heard the chairman say it. I've spoken to most of the commissioners individually. They've all said the same thing. I've spoken to every one of the towns. I've talked to their managers, and the one town I wasn't able to get the manager, I talked to their mayor. We've told them the same thing, that we're not coming into anybody's town to jam anything down anybody's throat. Whether, we have a history, I think we've worked well with the towns. We've tried really hard over time to work well with the towns. We've done a lot of good things together with the towns, and there's no reason why we can't do things together going forward. With that said, I also suggested to the managers in that meeting that maybe, you know, going forward, we need to create some kind of a, an entity, a task force, a committee, whatever you want to call it, where we look at ways to go forward. I think if you look at the housing situation and the number of units that we need, it's unlikely that we would be able to build our way out of this. We're not going to build 2,500 or 3,000 housing units. We're, one, we don't have the land for it. Two, we don't have the money for it. And so we've got to find some solutions. You know, building units is but one of those solutions. There are multiple other solutions out there. A lot of the solutions that have been suggested are things that have been looked at. I know out in Vail, Colorado, they do some of the things that were suggested. We've looked at some studies from out there. We've looked at some studies from out there, where you have buybacks, where you give incentives to homeowners to put covenants on their house. There's all these kinds of things that you can do. Our issues in North Carolina is that a county is very limited on how they can use dollars for housing. And so to do some of those things is going to require us to do something with the legislature, but we need to start having those conversations if we're ever going to solve this problem. If we build everything that we've got money to build today, you know, we're going to build roughly 400 units. You know, that's a drop in the bucket to what's needed, and so that isn't going to be the solution all by itself. With that said, I suggested to the managers, and each of the managers thought that it was a good idea, and I suggest to you all, and I'm not springing this on you, I think I've talked to some of you all about this as well, that we put together some kind of a committee or a task force that consists of, you know, an elected official from each of the entities, the manager from each of the entities, and maybe the planner from each of the entities, to start talking about how do we get these problems solved. You know, the first step is everybody's got to recognize there's a problem. I know in one of the towns we went to, some of their board said, we don't have a housing problem. That isn't what all the studies that have been done, that we've had done, that the tourism boards had done. That's not what the studies that the developers that we've talked to, who are interested in building housing here, and all those studies say, you know, that we have a housing problem. I think we have a housing problem. I think it's clear that we do. You know, if everybody agrees we've got a problem, then I think we can work together to do that. We've done some great things in Dare County together. Our water system, that was originally a system that was done with Nags Head, Kill Devil Hills, and Dare County sitting in a room and figuring out how to make it work and how to come up with a water system to do that. On Hatteras Island, when, you know, the old Cape Hatteras Water Association had some limitations, working together, and that community, the county, came in and was able to solve water problems on Hatteras Island. You know, I can make the list go on. Mr. Ferring mentioned schools. I mean, we had a contentious school debate, maybe more contentious than even what we're talking about now, and we worked together to get it on. So I'm confident that if you all put something like that together, then we can work forward to solve housing problems in Dare County as we go forward. And again, we'll work with each of the towns currently with the dollars we have to try to use those dollars wisely to solve some of those problems as well. So with that said, I don't know if you have questions, but if there are, I'm glad to answer them.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to yield to the board and ask the board if they want to add anything to county manager's comments. Commissioner Count?
I think we agree that All right, we good?
We agree. I think we, everybody agrees on the what, all right? It's the how, and we can get there. We can solve these problems. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Count. Commissioner Bateman?
Yeah. Bobby, when we put this task force together, this group, can we also give them direction? And it's going to have to take cooperation from the municipalities also to look at the 10,000-plus short-term rentals we have to have Johnny folks lobby legislating to turn those into possibly long-term through incentives, even tax credits. I don't know if we can use some of the $35 million in order to give monies back to those individuals, to have them turn those long-term, or short-terms into long-term rentals.
The $35 million is restricted to building units by a, I think they call it a private partner that selected us. So it's designated that you have to select somebody to build the units, and then you give them the money to do that with. It doesn't allow us to do anything else with that money. In terms of the goals of this committee that I'm discussing, the goals are, it's not my committee, it's your committee, and so the goals are whatever you all set as the goals. And if that's one of the goals that you want, then you just include that in it when we give whatever committee that comes of this their direction.
Well, my direction to the board would be, my opinion is that I think that's something that we're missing. And I'll give you a prime example on Porridre. There were five Airbnbs in 2021. Now there are two, and they've been reversed from short-term rentals to now long-term. That happened because of economics. They weren't renting. And I've been told, folks west of the bypass, those aren't renting. Ones between the highways are down like 35% from what they were in 2021. The ones on the oceanfront are still renting like mad dogs. So there's properties out there that people might say, well, you know, why don't I get some incentives from the government? If I get incentives from, the tax breaks might be workable. Does that make sense? You're smiling at me, Rod?
No, I was smiling.
That's been brought up by several folks, and as the task force, that certainly should be something
I don't think anyone would reject out of hand, Irvin. I agree, Bobby said that the 35 is specifically restricted.
Okay.
But broader options, I mean, we've got a heck of a problem here. I mean, everything needs to be considered.
But it's got to be, I mean, and people have suggested, it's not all the county, you got to get the towns involved in this big time because they're going, we can't give all the money back. It has to be done through the towns, I'll say.
If you look at that Vail study, and what Vail actually did out there, it did exactly what you said, and it did a number of other things. It bought some houses. It paid a property owner to put covenants on a house to guarantee that it be in a long-term rental. It paid some Airbnbs to convert them back. It did a number of things. Again, they have those authorities that we currently don't have, but that doesn't mean we couldn't get them. But, and so we have to, again, my vision of this committee would be that we would have this committee, and those kind of ideas would come forward. The things we can do, we would start trying to do the things that we can't do, then we'd start looking at ways, how do we get the permissions that we need to do the things we can't do?
It just seems to me if legislation in a week put this bill that says that we have no authority to return something down, that in a week, they can put the authority in there that gives us the right to give monies back to somebody for a tax credit.
I'm trying to follow, Irvin. You're saying they would modify the legislation in a week to give us broader latitude?
I'm saying if legislators in a week have passed a bill, which is the bill that we're talking about and the topic here, if they did that in a week, it seemed like in a week also, they can make concessions to allow us to give tax credits to go from short-term to long-term.
We certainly think so. You would certainly hope so.
It kind of makes sense to me, but my world's a simple world.
Well, I think it's a good idea that may or may not succeed, but I'm not disagreeing. I'd just like to see something get done in a straightforward manner. I don't know.
Anyone else like to comment?
Yeah, I had a couple. I had just one or two things, and I wanted to speak, if I could momentarily, to Commissioner Stetson. You still here, Ruth? Hi. I recall meeting, in small meetings, with several members of the Manio Commissioners Group and speaking at length about the Bowser Town property, excuse me, and going through the list of things that were concerns. There were several, I think, Chairman, you said seven or eight? And during those discussions, if, I also heard you use the word slander as a sin. If any of us, I don't recall slandering you or any of your fellows, but you did say that, and I heard you. We didn't slander, we didn't ramrod, we didn't force. We met each of these seven or eight conditions, and your board ultimately voted unanimously, no, you will not build on Bowser Town. We don't have a plan to build on Bowser Town. So I just wanted to address that for the record, because I took a little bit of umbrage with some of your characterization. We've gone up and down the beach. Thank you, county manager, for the summary. It was accurate. I also heard a public comment speaker say, if you think there's going to be negotiation or a task force, forget it. Yes? Yeah, I did. I heard you. I think that's the only option forward, is to speak with, cooperate with, and attempt to establish some common ground with each of the towns. I think the recommendation is an excellent one, that we'll bring in the planner, an elected representative from the town, with you, county manager, Noah Gillum, our planner, and Mr. Chairman, either yourself or a representative you designate, and determine whether or not we have a problem in Dare County. There was a process that I once used and often used during my working years, and it was referred to by the acronym of GROW, G-R-O-W. And it always started with the hardest part, the G, goal. Contentious parties often thought they were agreeing on a goal, but after deeper review and pushing, the goal was really different, until an established goal is agreed upon, as in, people really need housing. People are desperate. And then an addressing of the reality, the options before us, and the selection of a way forward. Frankly, we're simply stymied, so I would urge us to pursue the task force sooner rather than later. I would urge, if there are scheduling issues, then someone else who can make the meeting be selected at the towns, and that we bring this to a clear and concise resolution soon. Because again, I still remember, Bobby, the day you and I and Commissioner Overman, Vice-Chair Overman, drove to Chapel Hill and met with the Development Finance Initiative and hired them as consultants to help us come up with a plan that would address this critical shortage in Dare County. And if I'm correct, Vice Chair, I believe that was over three years ago. And here we sit. So I urge us to take the action. I urge us to move forward with the towns and then make, very transparent, the process, the negotiations, I'm looking at Mary Helen, make sure you cover them, document them all from each of the, each of the towns, their concerns and how we might meet them as far as dealing with this housing crisis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Anyone else? Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quite thank everyone who spoke today. Thank you for expressing your opinions. I think the establishment of the task force is, as was pointed out, is the only way forward. The sooner the better, and we need a time certain on how long they will, they will work on this to come up with some answers and move forward. And if we need a motion on establishing that task force, then so move.
The only thing I would ask about what you just said is you said a time certain. What I would, housing is going to be a long-term solution. We're not going to have a task force that's going to meet five times, and we're going to solve housing, and it'll be over with. This is going to be something that's going to take years to resolve. And so I would think that this task force would be ongoing to try to build on whatever, wherever you start, build on that as you go forward, whatever new ideas come in, add those new ideas, rather than trying to say by, you know, January the 15th, we're going to have an answer, because I don't think that's how it's going to come out.
I think, I think that's good, Bobby. I think if we have, if we have even minor successes as we move along, that's fine, but if we run up on a stump and we aren't getting anywhere.
Sure.
I mean, what's the point?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good point, well taken. And just to the board's information, I've spoken with several of the mayors already about forming this task force, and they're very, very appreciative and very much on board with doing so. So I don't, I don't know that we need a motion, county manager, I can, his chair, I can form that task force and reach out to the mayors, and I will do so as soon as this meeting is over with. And we'll go from there. Do you have anything else to add, county manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Once again, thank those for, for your comments today. I wasn't trying to preach to anyone, I'm just trying to make suggestions if, please go to your towns and talk to your towns. Once again, I need to reiterate what the county manager said and what I've had conversations with several mayors already about, is that we're not, this board does not want to come into any town, disrupt any, anything ordinance-wise or anything that they have. We want to work with the towns. We respected the decisions of Manio. I never criticized them one bit. I didn't fault them for the decisions that they made, and we've moved on. And same thing with the situation in Nags Head. The only reason Commissioner Ross and I attended that meeting is for six months, I was told personally that that site was an approved site, and that's why we went and we spoke on behalf of it. So once again, we're not here to come into any municipality and dictate to them what they should or should not have in their community. So with that said, I'm going to take a five-minute recess. I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order, county manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This brings us to item four on the agenda. This is a public hearing for fiscal year 2025, NC DOT 5310, 5311, and combined program grant applications. This grant is to find, is to fund two replacement vans and a total of 10 revenue vans. We're required to have a public hearing before you adopt the resolution allowing us to go forward, so we'll conduct that public hearing now. Anyone that'd like to speak, the same rules as public comment would now apply, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak to that issue? Seeing none, is there anyone in Buxton who'd like to speak to that issue?
No comment.
Hearing none, then the public, the public hearing would be closed, and Raco, you have anything to add to that?
I'm just glad to be here. I can't believe this is been a year. I appreciate what everyone's done. You too.
There's a, there's a resolution in your packet that needs your approval.
All right. It's a pleasure to board.
Not to approve, President.
All right. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House and the Vice Chairman to approve the resolution, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Raco.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Next is item five on the agenda. This is a public hearing with regard to a text amendment to the C2 zoning text amendment to add brewery as a list of permitted uses in the C2 general commercial zoning district. If anyone's here who'd like to speak to that issue, please raise your hand. Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
Comment with that. We would close the public hearing. And Noah, anything you need to add?
The text amendment to add breweries to a list of uses in the C2, that also would afford that use to the C3 district, because the C3 allows all uses in the C2. This primarily would affect Avon, Buxton, and a small portion of Roanoke Island, so it would open up that ability to have a brewery in those areas, so.
All right. Anyone have any questions, Noah? Once again, I'll ask the pleasure of the board.
There's a public hearing on the proposed text amendment to add breweries as permitted uses in the C2 zoning district.
That ain't the right thing. Sorry.
Now, there should have been an updated staff memo
Yeah.
Later to desk that had the draft motion included.
Looking for it.
Noah, did you have any, I'm just curious if there's any pushback in the planning committee?
No, sir. I haven't received any public comment at all from it.
All right. Thank you.
Noah, I can't find it, buddy.
On your, on your desk?
Oh, there it is.
Yeah. There was the errand submission into Agenda Manager that the prior staff memo was submitted, not the current.
Oh, there it is.
Move the draft amendment to add breweries to the C2 zoning district, section 22-25 of the Dare County zoning ordinance be adopted as drafted. A statement of consistency and reasonableness as prepared by staff is adopted as part of this motion.
It's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chair. Is that a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous. County manager?
Yes, sir. Item seven is a zoning map amendment. Maybe before we do the public hearing, if you would just tell them what this is about and what action you're asking for?
Joe Thompson of Land Joe Thompson of Lands' End Development LLC has submitted a zoning map amendment for his property located in Buxton. It's identified as 41027 NC Highway 12, excuse me, not Buxton, in Avon. Property's currently zone C-2. He owns the adjoining property that's to the north, and it's zone C-3, so he's seeking to have his property rezoned to the designation of his property next door. His intention would be if the rezoning was approved, that potentially he would abandon property lines and the property would function as one. He has a wide range of uses on the property. He's got a travel trailer park, a restaurant, the Avon fishing pier, a beach club, theater, parking, wide range of uses, like I said, on the site, so he's just seeking to have this done so the property could function as one.
So just to clarify, it doesn't add any additional use to the same property?
Well, to the property that he's asking for the rezoning, he would be coming from C-2 to C-3, so he would, the property he's seeking rezoning on, it would add a number of uses to that piece that he has on the piece directly next door.
But there's still the C-2 use that would buffer the C-3 from the residential district to the south.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. I think what it'll do, it'll help, and correct me, Joe, if I'm wrong, it's a little tight in there where the pier is and to the left of that with sites. I think by doing that, it might open it up some more, Joe, is that correct?
Sounds good to me.
Huh?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's what it appears to be to me, so, and I wouldn't have any objection to that. I'll yield to the board if the board has any questions. You want to add anything to it, Joe?
No.
Come up front.
Was the property posted?
Yes, sir. And it was advertised in the paper.
Yeah.
So it was posted?
Yeah, it was posted, right.
And there was no objection to the property next to it?
No, I have not, I've received comments from the HOA Board for the multifamily condominiums next door, you know, in favor of his proposal, they didn't have any objections.
With that, then we can conduct the public hearing, and then you all.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So we'll open the public hearing with regard to the text amendment for the Avon map amendment that was described by Mr. Gillum. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to that issue? Anyone in Buxton like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
Hearing none, we close the public comment, and it's with the board.
Yeah, I'll ask Joe if he wants to make any comments.
Good morning, Chairman, County Commissioners, and those who serve. Yeah, the main thing is the functionality. It allows us to, the pier property, as we refer to it, has a tremendous septic system that was originally built and designed for a four-story 95-room hotel that never came to happening. It has water mains running through the property, hydrants. So for us to be able to recombine and make this property one allows us to do some things. I would say probably the most obvious future plan would be, what the chairman kind of alluded to, would be an expansion of our RV park. It's great. It's not affordable housing, not yet, but it is a big thing that brings a lot of people to the island, and Avon has for years and years not really had that option, so we're stoked on it. My one question to, I guess to staff and would be, this, how long of a term, how long of a term would we have to, because we have different things we have to jump through if you guys approve this. We have to go update our stormwater management plans on both pieces of property, we have to do some CUP updates, I have surveying to be done, so I have a laundry list of items that had to be completed before we could effectively recombine, and that will take some time. What type of time does this thing allow?
This would be immediate action as soon as they make their recommendation.
Would it have an expiration date?
Map amendments, it's zoned until it's unzoned, so it'd be...
I understand. Okay, so there's no, okay, no conditions. Okay, okay, that's clear enough. Any questions?
No, I don't think so, Joe. Well, thank you, thank you, appreciate your time this morning. I will ask the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the map amendment for Lands' End, located at 41027 Highway 12 in Avon, be reclassified from C-2 to C-3, and there's a finding of consistency and reasonableness that's in our packet is adopted as part of my motion.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Couch. It's been seconded by the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion?
It's a great place to get something to eat.
Yeah. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Noah. Thank you, Joe.
That brings us to item eight on the agenda. Michael Tillot, Richard Quinley, and Sarah Hall are here to make a presentation on behalf of the GarageBand charities.
Thanks for your patience, guys, and waiting around for this. Thanks for saying it.
Yeah, I didn't see any yawns from anybody over there.
Michael, Richard, Sarah, thank y'all for being here this morning. We're, once again, as Commissioner Ross said, thank you for your patience.
No problem at all. First off, let, thank you all for everything you do for the county and for our organization. We've just finished up our fifth year of the OBS Rod and Custom Festival that's helped us to be able to donate back to the community, and we're going to let Richard and Sarah give you the numbers on that, but I just wanted to thank you all for all your help. You know, we came to y'all in 2019, five years ago. Time flies when you're having fun, and y'all gave us the okay and the go-ahead to do this project, to do this event, and it's, as you see, it's grown over the last five years. First, we just want to thank y'all for letting us do that, and on behalf of GarageBand charities and the OBS Rod and Custom Festival, we would just like to thank you for everything y'all have done to make this ride a smooth ride, and we're still waiting for Mr. Woodard to get him a hot rod.
I got to sell that Harley first.
We can get that, we can make that happen. Right, Richard?
Don't sell the Harley. There's room for both.
Definitely, but we just want to thank you all for everything y'all have done to help us, because without this whole community doing this, this would never happen. We can want it all we want, but it, you know, when you grow up, you say it takes a village, and it does, and thank you all very much, and so we'll get on to our presentation.
Thank you, Michael. And just to give you an update on where we stand, what we're doing, we have two presentations of checks for today and several others that we'll be making in the coming weeks. But just to give you an idea of what the event has grown to, this past year, we had 916 registered vehicles. So we brought in a little bit of noise, well, a whole lot of noise, a whole lot of people, and our charity this year, we are able to donate in total $40,000 back to the community charities.
Wow.
Our focus has always been children's charities and education, and that's where we intend all of these monies to go to, whether it be education things, the Food for Thought is one of them. We do support our neighbors in Hyde County with one of their toy runs, toy drives, Adder's United Methodist Toy Fund is one of them, Elizabeth City State University Virginia Tillot Fund, and, let's see here, Dare County Motorsports Charity Group with the toy drive there, and Children and Youth Partnership is our primary donor recipient. So with that, we'd like to make a donation at this point, if we can have, let's see here, Angie Willis with Elizabeth City State University, we'd like to present you with a check.
Hello, how you doing? Thank you so much.
And this is for the Virginia Tillot Fund. Thank you so much. Check for $2,500.
Wow.
Very good.
Thank you so much. Can I say a few words?
You bet you can.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. On behalf of our Chancellor, Dr. Carrie Dixon, and also our Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs and University Advancement, Dr. Gary Brown, we thank you all so very much. These scholarships are really transformative for lots of our young people who come from Northeastern North Carolina, and certainly, education we know is key to success and how our young people enter into the workforce. So thank you all so much on behalf of Elizabeth City State University and your calls. Thank you so much. I think that's phenomenal.
Thank you.
Thank you, again. Appreciate it. Thank you. Pleasure meeting you all. The Tillot family. No, your mom was a part of it.
Thank you. She certainly was, in many ways. And next, if Ms. Carla will step up from Children and Youth Partnership. And at the beginning of our event, we actually presented a check for $10,000 to the Children and Youth Partnership, and we would like to give you another check today. And Sarah has that there. So we would like to present you with an additional $10,000.
Oh, my gosh.
The total is $20,000 for Children and Youth Partnership. Thank you.
So Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County's mission is to connect all children, adolescents, and families with programs and partnerships to ensure that they have what they need to thrive, and it's only through donations like this, through the support of our community, that we're able to continue to do that. So we are so appreciative and thankful for you all in continuing to support us.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you so much.
In closing, again, we'd like to express our appreciation to the county, the towns, the police departments for their tolerance, and everybody just helping us have a good time and support our charities through what we do. Richard, you all done an incredible job over the five years. I don't want to put you on the spot, but $40,000 this year in those five years, it's had to been a substantial amount of money. Do you know what the total run is?
Our total will end up being at, once we've given out the rest of the money for this year, $125,310 and 60 cents.
Unbelievable. In five years, that's incredible. Great job, guys.
Thank you so much.
Just a question, guys.
And thank you again for your support.
The 916 registered vehicles this year was, this past year was phenomenal. Do you recall what it was the first year? So you've tripled basically in size. Fantastic.
And survived COVID.
Yeah. Great work.
Great work, guys. Fantastic.
Thank you. Look forward to doing this again next year.
Absolutely.
Super.
Everyone save the date for next year, May 34, 2024, OBS Rod and Custom Festival. Got you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
County Manager?
Sir, that brings us to item nine on our agenda. Dorothy Hester, our Public Information Officer, is here to present you a resolution in support of honoring Dare County's veterans by participating in Operation Green Light from November 6 through November 19.
Okay, I almost missed that here, and is he on the resume?
I do.
Okay, well, let you read it after I just tell you all briefly. NACO, or the National Association of Counties, a few years ago, they brought forth an initiative, and it's basically encouraging the nation's over 3,000 counties, parishes, and boroughs to join Operation Green Light, and this is an effort to show support for veterans, and it's to light county buildings green during Veterans Day, November 6 through 12. And by shining a green light, the county and our residents let veterans know that they're seen, appreciated, and supported. So we talked with the county manager, Shanna's involved with this as well from Public Works, and said, hey, this would be kind of cool to do this, and we've talked about which county buildings we could actually light green. And rather than going November 6 through 12, we're expanding so that we'll have, you know, those lights, those green lights in place when the wall that heals is here. That's the veterans, the three-quarter size veterans memorial wall that'll be at the Soundside Event Site. So we think this is going to be really cool. We have our EMS stations, the water department, libraries, a building here on this site, parks and rec facilities, they'll be, they'll have a green light in place. And some of the towns are working on it as well. I know that Nag's Head has told us they'll light Doughty Park green, which will have a lot of impact, because it's right there on the road. So in addition to lighting county and town facilities, we're going to ask citizens to just change one light bulb, if possible, to green during that time, and it could be an exterior light or even an interior light, just to start a conversation to let our veterans know that they're appreciated and supported.
Cool.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to give you all a little background on that Operation Green Light. We have Patty, our Veteran Service Officer, she's on board, and I just think it's nice, excited about it. I'm, I've reached out to some of the, like, Ace and Lowe's and Home Depot about, and some of them have green lighting in stock, and the others said they would work to try to have some, so. And we put it on the agenda this month rather than next, so we can go ahead and get a release out and get people prepared so they can get that lighting before it's time to put it up.
Good deal.
Awesome.
Sir, I'd like to thank Dorothy for her work. This came out last year about this time, and we really didn't have time to get going, because we had less than a month when we became aware of it. And so for the past year, she's been working with our department heads and with our staff. We've talked about it a couple of times at our staff meetings to try to get everybody on board, and she's really been the one to spearhead this, and I've seen the guys out here working, changing lights, getting everything ready to go, and so I think it's really going to be something nice in early November when we start, and you see those green lights honoring our veterans. So thank you, Dorothy, for all your hard work on that. This is the resolution. It says, "Whereas Dare County recognizes the necessity and value of employing a dedicated Veteran Services Officer, whose role includes aiding and advocating for local veterans by helping them to navigate the complexities of a veteran's specific benefits, resources, programs, and ensuring they receive the benefits and assistance they deserve. And whereas the Dare County Board of Commissioners established the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council in respectful recognition of the service and sacrifice of all Dare County veterans as represented in all five branches of the United States Military. And whereas members of the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council assist Dare County veterans by serving as a liaison with the community in coordinating services and activities that benefit local veterans and their families, and also solicit information and provide updates about activities honoring veterans in our community. And whereas the residents of Dare County have utmost respect, appreciation, and gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and our community in the U.S. Armed Forces, and believe these service members should be granted specific recognition. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices made by those who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and Dare County seeks to honor these individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in various organizations such as the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, religious groups, and community organizations, as well as through civil service and by volunteering at various community-based events. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service member experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and that active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas as of 2022, 40% of transitioning service members stationed in bases throughout North Carolina decided to stay in North Carolina upon their transition to civilian life..." upon their transition to civilian life. And 55% of service members retiring from the military with 20-plus years of service also made the decision to stay in North Carolina. Whereas more than 3,200 veterans who are currently residing within Dare County are receiving services provided by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs that range from healthcare to assistance with filing claims. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to participate in Operation Green Light for Veterans 2023 by shining green lights throughout their communities to let local veterans know they are seen, appreciated, and supported. Whereas the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council worked with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund to bring the Wall That Heals, a traveling three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, Washington, D.C., that tours the country, to Dare County, where it will be on display at the Soundside Event Site in Naggs Head from November 16, 2023, through November 19, 2023. Therefore, be it resolved that having officially been designated a Green Light for Veterans County, Dare County hereby declares now through November 19, 2023, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform. And therefore, be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light 2023, the Dare County Board of Commissioners encourages its citizens to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve our freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 6, 2023, through November 19, 2023. This is the second day of October, 2023.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt. Is there a second? Second by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That would bring us to our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes. We have the tax collector's report. We have a memorandum of agreement from the NC State Extension. We have a budget amendment for the NCRPA grant for a Nerf gun program at Bethesda Center. We have reimbursement resolution for the Series 2024A Limited Obligation Bonds. We have a general fund budget amendment for transfers to other funds. We have a budget amendment for the dredge loan forgiveness. We have authorization to present service weapon to a retiring deputy sheriff. We have Department of Health and Human Social Services, Adult Protective Services, Essential Services Fund. And we have DHHS Public Health Division COVID-19 Vaccination Program funding.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next are your board appointments. The first is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Shannon Glazer, Paul William Pollack, and Laura Gilreath have all agreed to be reappointed for another term. Stephanie Baker resigned from the nonprofit position, and Jamie Koch will be replacing her. Amber Knob resigned for her position as school superintendent designee, and Robin Vermillion was recommended to continue her term. The council recommends Ava Anderson to fill the vacancy as chief court counsel or designee. And the at-large seat that Jamie Koch held will remain vacant at this time.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve. Is there a second?
My second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Dare Library Board. The Library Board recommends Lisa Matthews to fill a vacancy on that board.
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Vice Chairman Overman to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing those, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
On the Transportation Advisory Board, Mady Hernandez Beecham's term expires, and she does not wish to be reappointed. And Amanda Hooper has resigned for her position. Those two seats will remain vacant until we get a recommendation from them. Your upcoming board and committee appointments in November, you have none. In December, you have five terms expiring for the Equalization Review Board. You have one term expiring for the Parks and Rec Advisory Council. You have three terms expiring for the Special Motor Vehicle Evaluation and Review Committee. Tourism Board has seven terms expiring, and you have one term expiring from the Transportation Advisory Board. And you don't have any appointments for the month of January. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item 12, Commissioner's business, County Manager's business. Commissioner Ross, do you mind kicking it off today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes. If I may, I would like to ask the board's agreement with me. I have mentioned this to several of you. I sit on the Virginia Tillet Center Board as well. And in our recent meeting, we became aware that every Christmas there is a very, very significant toy drive that's provided by the Tillet Center. And it's broken down by age groups, and sort of baskets or bags of gifts are designated from the little ones to the kind of elementary school and then some middle schoolers. Well, they unfortunately have lost one of their regular large donors. So, I am looking at Mr. Clausen and county manager. I'm asking the board's approval if we could authorize a $10,000 submission to the Tillet Center designated for the Christmas toy drive to help replace some of the funding that they lost this year. So, I would like to make a motion that we do that.
All right, there's a motion then, and before us, by Commissioner Ross for $10,000 for the Tillet Center. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, members. Thank you very much. It will be greatly appreciated, I assure you. A couple of calendar items that I wanted to mention. On October 7, at the border station at 9:00 a.m., will be an Alzheimer's Walk sponsored by our friends in the Dementia Friendly Task Force. They are a dedicated group, and they will come up again. I've got more things to say about them. On the 13th of October, at 6:00, we have an SPCA-sponsored Stand Up for Strays. Looking at Commissioner House. He and I kind of tag-team on our pet of the week and SPCA endeavors. It's a comedy club event. It's being held in Naggs Head, and unfortunately, it's sold out. So, nobody can buy any tickets anymore. But it's going to be a great event, and I will be there. On October 21, at Duckwoods Country Club, this is the major fundraiser of the year for the dementia-friendly coalition here in Dare County. It is called Love to Remember. It is a tennis and pickleball tournament. It is a big fundraiser. And again, I will be attending. I will be speaking at the event. And I have a very soft spot for the work that they do in providing support, education, and relief for those suffering from memory loss and the related outcomes, as well as those caregivers that do so much in selfless sacrifice for those needing that care. Not done yet. On October 27, this is a big one. The OBX Hospital Cancer Center is raising funds at the Cancer Shucks. S-H-U-C-K-S. It's a play on the word for oysters being shucked, but cancer shuck, Cancer Shucks as well. And it's at Pirate's Cove, a fundraiser. I'm putting in a big plug for that one. I don't believe that's sold out, so you can certainly look that one up for OBX Hospital Cancer Funds. Cancer Shucks at Pirate's Cove, the 27th of October. And my last plug. Friends of Jockeys Ridge. Mr. Chairman, I was there with you as well for the Mountains to Sea Trails commemoration. It was supported by the group of volunteers that helped make Jockeys Ridge State Park such a tremendous, tremendous destination for so many visitors and such a beautiful gem of a state park for us that live here. They are also raising funds through a designated license plate program. So, for just a few extra bucks, you can get a beautiful, doom-themed license plate. They're getting close to the number they need is a goal. So, again, I am making an unabashed plea to those in Dare County watching or listening. Go to the website, Friends of Jockeys Ridge. You click on the menu, and there will be license plate. Click on that, and you're in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. I appreciate it. Commissioner House?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things to go over. One thing. Mr. Bragg, I did get a copy of your email that you sent. I see how, that it was actually, that you actually sent it and addressed it to me, and you also CC'd yourself, which in that instance is, it goes straight to our spam mail. As a, so I will definitely respond to your email on that. The North County Division of Marine Fisheries has stepped up and started to get more involved with social media. And in the past month or so since they've been doing it, about every day or every other day, they'll put a post out. And it's blatantly clear. Every single social media post they have put out since they started this has everything to do in highlighting recreational fishing. There is not one single post that commemorates or anything with our commercial fishermen or our industry. And that was kind of an eye-opener. Our day in history. In 1836, Charles Darwin finished his five-year trip on the HMS Beagle and ended up in England. And that's when he started writing his theory of evolution. And then, on a better highlighted area, as we always do, and Commissioner Ross can agree with that, our pet of the week, meet Big Yellow.
Our pet of the week this week is Big Yellow. Big Yellow is a super sweet boy that was brought into the shelter in May because unfortunately, he was bit by an unknown animal. So, that led to a six-month quarantine. His quarantine is now up, and he is doing fantastic. Big Yellow loves attention and doesn't seem to mind other cats. To adopt Big Yellow or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
Big Yellow's pretty kitty and definitely needs a good home. And Dorothy, maybe some of your staff will run over there and...
Where's Stephanie?
Where's Stephanie Banfield? Send out an alert.
So, with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On September 13, the Albemarle RPO met in Hurtford. A report on Alligator River by Mr. Bridger stated that the planning for that project is now 95% complete. And DOT is now working with the contractor on completion of the design. So, that work is moving ahead, and we hope within a couple of years to have a new bridge across Alligator River. Other Dare County projects were considered to be in various stages of completion or contract letting, which would go on through, those projects would go on through 2026, and total nearly $80 million of expenditures for these projects, which is... Isn't that right, Donna? It's impressive, isn't it? Donna used to be on that board with me. On September 18, the Wall That Heals Committee met with the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, Ms. Lori Love, and the town of Naggs Head to discuss some of the late-stage planning for the event. Want to thank all of Naggs Head departments for their support of the Wall That Heals. It will be here literally in about six weeks. It's kind of hard to believe, but time is drawing short. And we're frantically trying to get the last-minute preparations made for that. With regard to this board's appointment for CSI, I have served on the local CSI Board of Directors as the Board of Commissioners representative since February of 2017. It has been my pleasure to do so, and it has been challenging and informative. CSI is a great resource for Dare County. I feel that after having served on this board for nearly seven years, that it is time for me to step aside and have another commissioner serve. I asked Commissioner Ross if he would be interested in doing this, and he has enthusiastically expressed his desire to do so. So, if you will agree by support of this motion, I move to appoint Commissioner Rob Ross to replace me on the CSI Local Board of Directors as the Dare County Board of Commissioners representative.
All right, it's motion on the floor to do so. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Ross.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Also, as always, want to thank our employees of the month, Angie and Stephanie. I don't think we could have picked two better ones for these two months running. And I don't work very much with Angie, but I do work a significant amount with Stephanie, and she is always helpful in particularly wordsmithing things that I mess up on. So, I really appreciate her. Last thing, I'd like to mention a little something about flounder season. We effectively had one week of flounder season this year, primarily due to the storm and the other weather conditions that prevailed after that storm. So, now, more of these flounder can swim to either Virginia or South Carolina and wind up on the tables there. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. On the 28th of September, we lost a local fisherman, Jimmy Rule, had been a fisherman for almost 50 years and active in a community, in fishing community, and also active in his community and so forth. We're going to miss him big time. Mr. Ross, Commissioner Ross had me, hooked me up with NC Works. I went to my first meeting in beautiful downtown Hurtford. It was very informative. I'm getting my feet wet, but I think I will be able to make a difference.
Thank you, Urban.
Thank you. That was a good thing. So, I appreciate that very much. Hooked me up with those guys. This is Domestic Violence Month. I looked in my closet this morning trying to find some purple. I couldn't find any, but I will try to get a shirt to wear sometime this month to support that. You know, the housing bit, guys, and I'm just going... I was laying in bed last night thinking about this meeting this morning, knowing kind of what was going to be coming in front of us. And I was thinking, Urban, what have you done on your part to make a difference on this? And I haven't done anything. Basically, I feel like I have not accomplished. I feel somewhat defeated in the efforts. Although, I'm optimistic after this meeting where we're going forward. But we need to understand who we're addressing. And in this past year, I've had interactions with three or four people concerning housing and their plight and so forth. And I think they need to be recognized, and people need to understand kind of how and what we're working for too. I was approached in July from a single mom working at a convenience store in Kill Devil Hills, making between $14 and $16 an hour, with two kids with a deadbeat dad who doesn't work, doesn't give them money. And she's living in an apartment paying $2,200 a month. It's completely freaking ridiculous that she's in that position. She also works a side job as a restaurant, at a hostess, not my restaurant, but as a hostess at nighttime, and she called me trying to get some help from the Relief Foundation to help her with making ends meet. $2,200 a month. If you buy a $500,000 house and you're paying a mortgage, your payment's roughly speaking at 5% interest rate is about $2,200 to $2,400 a month. That's not counting adding all your taxes and so forth to it. So she's not going to make it, although I wish her the best. Her plight is hard. The other one is that, and I've shared this with the Commissioner from Manio, who gave us such a great lecture, that, listen, in her town, there is a trailer that I went during the storm that had a four-by-four hole in the bathroom, in the floor, where the kids jump out of the bathtub to dry off. There was a hole in the floor, and there was also a hole in the roof that we give them tarpaulins that put over it because there was rain in the house, in the town of Manio. So don't sit and talk to me, we're doing everything about affordable housing in the municipalities when we have those kind of conditions and people living in that. This person is a hard-working guy. He's a nice guy, taking care of two grandkids. His plight is not being addressed. We're not addressing his issues. That's sad, y'all, and we're sitting there patting ourselves on the back, and I'm laying in bed in my house, on my pillow and dry, with not water coming dripping in my house and so forth, and I think I've done something. I ain't done a damn thing. And that's how I feel about it. I feel very flustered because we're not addressing these people's issues. And the last one I'm going to tell you about is a young lady who just graduated the College of Albemarle with a nursing degree, that found out that by graduating and going upscale to her $34 an hour job, she's no longer qualified to live in the Manio HUD house over there because she makes too much money. So she's going to lose her housing. We're not addressing the issues, guys. It's crazy. She can only make $38,000 with a family of three in order to qualify to live in that house. So the plight that we have in front of us, it's enormous. I know everybody here is committed 100% to getting this thing addressed and going forward. I don't know how it's going to work out, but I encourage all the municipalities, all the commissioners, all the planners, all the residents that have opinions and so forth to be, like Malcolm said, find a solution, not continuously bring up what we cannot do. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. With that said, we don't have a housing issue, huh?
Evidently not in Manio, they don't.
Yeah, interesting.
Well, you heard a number of commenters say basically, "Just work harder," right?
Yeah.
I heard that.
Yep.
Just work hard.
Commissioner Couch?
Yeah, I just want to add to, you know, there's a lot of vocalization going on about people who are not for the essential housing, and I would just add to that. I hear from my constituents down on Hatters Island on a regular basis. They don't want to get caught up in the blogs and the drama and stuff, but they're concerned they don't have any place to live. And, you know, we have, with planning, we have laws to enforce, and, excuse me, ordinances to enforce, and when you see people, you know, because they can't find a place to live, they're living in trailers, the homeless, travel trailers, the homeless definition is very broad. You've got people sleeping in their cars, you've got people staying with grandmothers and relatives and stuff, and these are grown adults, and I recognize the fact that it is time to deal with this, and to stick our head in the sands that we don't have a problem here is not going to fly. And again, you've got a lot of people who don't want to get caught up in the emotional aspect of this. Everybody's mad and hurt, you know, that's not going to get anything done. How you get done is exactly what was proposed here, is to go ahead and sit down with the powers that be and go ahead and resolve this issue here of trying to get working people who make our economy go a place to live. I think it's going to benefit everybody. That's, and that's all I've got to say about that. We're very busy down in Hatters, it's a good thing. They're catching fish. The weather's been hanging in there for the most part. We've dealt with a couple of tropical systems going by, a lot of top-tide sea running high down there and everything, getting up on the highways and stuff, but we are busy. And, you know, I can appreciate, you know, the traffic problems that, you know, that they, some people insinuate will happen with this, and that could be, but you're talking to a guy who lives in an area with one road, and, you know, it takes me 10 minutes to go such-and-such up here. Well, you know, I'm 42 miles away from McDonald's. I'm 67 miles from Walmart, so when somebody tells me they've got a long drive, I'm, you know, kind of have to look away. It's a minor inconvenience in my mind to have the quality of life that we have here. We've got a problem here, and we cannot stick our head in the sand anymore and let this go away. And is this Board been dealing with it for three years? Yes, we have, and I appreciate the County Manager bringing up the CDC, because I remember when that was going on. And, you know, if after 22 years we haven't got anything done, then I salute this Board for tackling it. Okay. One thing that's been going on here that I don't know, I knew Locke Faircloth, he died on the 14th, he was 95. He was an influential, he was in state government, he was our federal representative, and he was a pistol. I don't know if you guys remember, but he took on Bill and Hillary Clinton, and he also took on Marion Barry when all the stuff was going on in DC. He was a bulldog-type guy. He was a Democrat for a long time, and then he and Terry Sanford kind of had a bit of a falling out, and so he ended up going, he's, the first time I ever heard that the Democratic Party left me came from Locke Faircloth. But here's what I will always remember about that guy. I remember I was with a group of Hatters folk, and we were up in DC, and we went into his office, and he proceeded to tell us about coming up from Ocracoke, this was in the 50s, and sleeping on the beach, and just all he had was a blanket and a rolled-up hooded sweatshirt that he used as a pillow, and he never forgot that. And then the next thing you know, we're sitting, looking at a $275,000 grant. He was very good with constituent services, and I'm just gratified that he was a North Carolina rep who got things done for his constituents. And I don't know if you remember this or not, but, and it's been quite a few years, pushing 35 years ago, but he was in a plane crash in the mountains, and they, all four of those people in that plane should have perished. And he said, "By the grace of God, I was able to get..." They were in an airplane underwater, and he was able to get the door open with the... Somebody opened, a superior force opened that door for him, and those four guys survived. And to hear him tell that story was just an amazing thing. I ran into a, he only had one child, I believe, but I ran into somebody from Sampson County that I asked, I knew he was from down that way, and I asked, "Hey, what do you hear from Locke Faircloth?" And she said, "Well, he's not doing well," and he had, he'd had dementia and Alzheimer's for quite a number of years, but he was just a special guy, and I didn't want too much time to go by without recognizing him. But Faircloth was, if there's a Hall of Fame for North Carolina constituent services guys, he's going to be, he's going to be there. Okay. Long meeting today, and Angie Austin there, that was, well done, Jenny, and then, of course, our other one, her name just flew out of my head, Stephanie. God, why would I remember that? Call her every week. Too well-deserved. I love the Employee of the Week and Employee of the Month, and just, our people do so much, they, with the reason, we're as good as we can be, but they just, they step up, they like their jobs, and I'm deeply appreciative of our county employees. All right, 10 minutes, I'm getting a red light over here on the podium.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Danny, it's good to hear you all catching fish down there. Do they throw the flounders back down there?
What you talking about, Wally?
Just a question.
Got one right here.
I think you all are aware, I was in Maine recently for about a week, and it was phenomenal just to eat lobster right from the lobster boat right into the restaurant on the end of the dock, but they're not without their fishing issues either, Commissioner House. It was unbelievable. I was talking to the guys that pick up the lobster from the pier and distribute it. They have not been able to shrimp fish for five years. Five years, there's no shrimping. I was in Kitty Buck Point, Maine. They have not been able to fish for, it's unbelievable, all imported from overseas, and certainly hope that doesn't happen to the lobster industry because they can lobster 365 days a year there, and there's no limit on their catch, Commissioner House. The only limits are you have to throw back a lobster that's a pound and below and four pounds and above. Anything in between, you can keep, and you can harvest as many of them as you want, and they go daily. It's pretty impressive, so it's amazing to see what other states and communities have to go through fishery-wise, but I was floored when they told me they hadn't been able to shrimp for five years. Pretty incredible. Unbelievable, I thought it was a good meeting today. I just would ask those who have issues with housing, that they would at least perhaps maybe have an open mind moving forward and give us an opportunity to solve this issue, and not in any opposition to you, Commissioner Bateman, but I think we have worked extremely hard to try to find solutions to this, so I don't want to say that we've done nothing, but I think we've worked very, very hard to try to solve the issue. We might not have uncovered everything, but I wouldn't go so far, at least I wouldn't just feel like that we haven't done anything, because we have certainly worked diligently to try to find solutions to it. And last but not least, Johnny Tillot is here today representing our lobbyist group from Maguire Woods, and Johnny, I apologize for not mentioning this earlier in the meeting, but I want to say to you and Harry Kaplan and your organization, we could not have a, find a group of gentlemen representing us in Raleigh as lobbyists for us. You guys have done a tremendous job, and I'll just tell you this right now, that man sitting out there, single-handedly got a half a million dollars out of the legislature for the Lost Colony.
Thank you, Johnny.
Yes, sir. Five million, excuse me, five million.
I thought it was more than a half million.
I don't know why I said 500, but he got 5 million. And that's incredible, well-needed money for the Lost Colony. Now, I sit on that Board as well as Johnny, we just got to make sure they spend it right, but I can't thank him enough for what he's done for the Lost Colony. Not only that, but as our lobbyist group, we, there's, he's walking those floors, and I've called him in the middle of the day, and he's walking those floors lobbying, and he answers the phone every single time, and he's, "Mr. Chairman, I'll get right back to you." I'm talking to Senator or House Member so-and-so, and sure enough, he does, calls me back, so we have no trouble whatsoever getting in contact with him and he and Harry and getting our points across, and they've done a great job for us. Thank you, Johnny.
That money should secure the Lost Colony's future as a sound entity to continue with this treasure that we have in Dare County called the Lost Colony. Is that fair?
Don't put me on the spot there, Mr. Ross.
Am I at least leaning in the right direction?
Yes, you're leaning right.
Okay, that's enough, thank you.
So with that being said, County Manager, do you have anything else for us?
I have one thing, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, I need a closed session pursuant to NC 143 through 181183 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the county in order to reserve the attorney-client privilege and to approve the minutes of the last closed session.
All right. Do we have a motion to do so? The motion by the Vice Chairman, seconded by Commissioner House. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Before we go into closed session, I'll yield to the Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, if she has anything else.
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy. And Mr. Clausen, you've been quiet over there today, so anything from you that's...
I've got a lot of work done.
I don't doubt it. I don't doubt it. Thank you very much. Then we'll recess to a closed session. I call the Dare County Board of Commissioners' meeting back to order, and I'll turn it over to the County Manager.
Yes, sir. In the closed session, the Board approved the minutes of the last closed session and consulted with the county attorney to preserve the county attorney-client privilege in the matter of O'Hare versus Dare County and took no other action.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to the end of our October 2nd meeting. I need a motion to adjourn until November 6th.
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, it's seconded by Commissioner House. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.